I would like to make the meeting over session.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, there was an executive session tonight on a couple matters, no votes were taken in that executive session. We need a motion to seal the minutes.
So who?
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'm going to call the Hockington Town Council Meeting on May 7th, 2018 to order with a moment of silent meditation.
My condolences to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in a dismal and liberating justice forum.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to move this new business plan.
No, we're going to do that after the conference.
After the conference. Oh, but then we have to go through. We have to have a discussion.
You want? Oh, Barbara, may I move? Does it cut time?
Sir. That says what the law.
To move the third item. Motion's made and seconded, you guys.
Yeah, exactly where we're going to move the two?
We're going to move the two.
Before the hearing?
Before the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Motion was made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we're going to move the, um, third item under new business. To the top of the agenda prior to the hearing on the CDVG application. The item under new business is possibly considered and or vote on whether to include some form of grant funding, provisional or otherwise, to Ashway Ambulance Association.
We're just waiting for a motion.
This is my favorite egg box.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to give Ashway Ambulance eighty percent of the total grant for the current fiscal year FY 2017-18, with the remaining twenty-six percent to be paid upon satisfaction of the town's conditions number nine and number ten, anti-nepotism policy and the business plan by or before June 30th, 2018.
Sir.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, votes?
I would add that, um, not as not add to the motion, but just for discussion that, um, the anti-nepotism policy, uh, we want that implemented by June 30th.
What do you mean by implement?
Well, they need, they need to implement their policy, the nepotism policy.
Right.
Rather than just adopt it.
To the council?
Right, something. Oh, yeah.
Actual?
And once they implement it, they're less now?
Yep.
Because it'll open up more money and so, yeah.
Any comments? Okay, motion's made, no more comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not in favor. They have not complied with all the conditions that the council set forth, and the two most important conditions are still outstanding, and, um, it's, they need to comply with those conditions, so. So, the motion carries, so that's it.
Alright, I'm going to leave, um, I just had surgery on Friday, and so, so council will be able to forward the form, so I can leave.
So you're going to make it tomorrow, right?
Oh, yes, I'll see you there. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, we've got a hearing, uh, this will get 2017. 2017 CDVG application, vote for the second public hearing on this fiscal year, 2017 community grant application, Mr. Landau.
Just to say that this is the second public hearing for the 2017 planning year, and they developed a primary application. The first public hearing was held in the Richmond Town Hall on March 8th, and was held in conjunction with multiple towns of West Greenwich, Exeter, North Kingstown, Charlestown, Richmond, Narragansett, and South Kingstown. The application that you have is trying to be, like, given to the planning board last week, and they reviewed the activities and determined that none of them were in conflict with the comprehensive plan. What you have been given to look at today is pretty simple, um, the only thing I really need you to do is to rank them one, three, four. I gave you my preference as to how I look to see them ranked and my reasons for it, um, but just to go through the activities here, activity number one is the Langworthy Field Improvements, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That is the amount that we need to match the grant that we just got from DEM so that we can finish the project out there, phase two of the project. We get that, we can finish it this year. Um, the second activity is for a, um, a project within the town of Hockington, it's on Fenwick Road, and it's for a, um, a residence with disabled adults, and they need to renovate their kitchen and floor to accommodate accessibility. They're different floor levels right now, and it's not easy for a wheelchair, so they're asking for eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars for that. The, uh, next one, number three, is the Johnny Cage Center in Westerly. They're looking for eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars for, um, ADA accessibility improvements to their primary entrance. And, one thing you'll notice a little bit different this year is that, um, the nonprofits which met at that first public hearing that we had, they all chose, uh, or asked, I should say, certain towns to be the host for their entire request for the year. So, we, uh, we agreed at that time, I agreed to accept the Warm Center as we only do in the Johnny Cage Center. So that's why their dollar amounts is so high this year, only if they ask for about ten and fifteen thousand dollars for multiple. So, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-five for accessibility improvements. And the Warm Center, uh, we all know that they do, uh, job, have a job readiness program, where they do job training, they assess their clients, um, and they seek, um, they see, uh, they get a place in the, in the workforce. And so, Mr. Russell Partridge is here, uh, representing the Warm Center, he's worked there very hard for years, and, um, he can speak if you have any questions, and also, I'd like to introduce Alice Buckley, who is the new executive director of the Washington County Community Development Corporation, which is going to be taking on the responsibilities that was formerly done by Jeff Marsh and company. So, uh, now, the final thing on here is fifteen thousand dollars for administration of the program, which will be done by Washington County. And, the total, the total application that we're going to submit this year is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two. There is no cap, uh, maximum cap this year.
Okay, Jim, thank you, so I guess we're going to need to rank these, Jim's asking us to list Langworthy as number one, and we just need to follow up with two, three, and four. Do you want to have any particular preference?
Yeah, I actually think it's, I like the way he's listed them, I, I like the idea of looking upwards, number two being the, um, the group home for adults, um, because that's in our neighborhood, it's in our community, and I think that would be of value. And then Johnny Cage, New York, and program administration, I think she arranges, absolutely fine.
Jim, looking upwards, is, is that run by a private organization, or is that state funded, uh, how is that?
Uh, well, looking, looking upwards is the nonprofit that, um, manages the group home, oh, down in Fenwick Road. So I, I, I'm sure they get state funding as well for that.
Alright.
Are they seeking, you know, whatever, is they seeking any, I'm sure it's just not for Hockington residents, or are they seeking funding from Richmond, Charlotte, for example?
Uh, I'm not aware of any other funding that they're seeking through the program. They're only doing the kitchen, so eighty-four hundred dollars should do.
Yeah, pretty much.
Should do kitchen cabinetry and flooring. Again, there could be other funds that go into that project too, so.
Tom?
I have a question.
No.
The order seems to be fine.
Okay, I do have another question, in a warm shelter, how many people are you training? What's your average, if I, if I could?
As many of you, my name is Russ Partridge, I'm the executive director for the Warm Center. As many of you probably remember, uh, at this time of year, when CDVG has come through before, we've all had to put in multiple projects or, or multiple applications to many towns. So, what Warm has done this year is, this project will actually fund portions of three salaries. It will fund the community outreach case manager who is working with people who are not homeless, but, but living out in the community and helping them with job readiness skills, job placement, um, resume writing. Uh, we also provide clothing, good used, uh, clothing to anybody coming in, not only in shelter, but in the community. And the other portion of this will be for the job developer who will work directly with people who are in the culinary training program that, uh, that Warm currently has. So the two together, I estimate that throughout the year, about three hundred individuals will come through in one way, shape, or form. Between the two programs, in the culinary specific, I would estimate at this point, properly in a full year, um, about seventy-five individuals would come through. We've been operating the culinary program for the last three years with funding through multiple towns and also Warm, um, and, and have seen, on average, since we've begun, about sixty-five people per year. Eighty percent of those, uh, receiving either full or part-time employment, with follow-up through, uh, the, uh, the job developer and case manager.
Yeah, I think overall that program has worked out pretty well for the neighborhoods and the community.
It really, it really has, thank you very much, it really has, it's really kind of, well, it's doing what we hoped it would do, it's helping not only folks to, to gain full or part-time employment, but it's also helping the employers, because many of the people who are coming through are heading to work in the kitchen, and, and so it cuts down on the amount of training time that employers have to.
And I'm glad it's going with also people in the community, not just homeless.
Yeah.
Because we need that as well.
Correct.
I really appreciate that.
Right, thank you.
Sugar, what'd you say?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, so I need a motion to adopt, motion to adopt the authorization, excuse me, motion to adopt authorizing resolution.
I'll send it.
Sir.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion, folks? Have a written motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, consent agenda, approved town council meeting minutes of April 16th, 2018. Executive session minutes of April 2nd, 2018. Special town council meeting minutes of April 23rd, 2018. Joining town council and planning board workshop notes of April 23rd, 2018. Prove to March 19th, 2018. Court transcript has the record pertaining to Ryan Solar Renewable Energy LLC and Maxon Hill LLC telling the organization members a confidentiality claim amendment. Set May 21st, 2018 as a hearing date for a special event. Permit filed by Ashway Cub Scout Act One.
I need to talk on April 23rd.
I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to read.
No.
Court, Court Two. Barbara, you too.
Um, the 23rd, meeting minutes of workshop. So, motion to approve the company meeting of April 16th. Joining town council, uh, sort of, on March 18th, 2018. And to set May 21st for the meeting.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, I was not here this evening.
And, um.
How do you abstain?
A motion to.
I abstain.
An a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 23rd and joining town council and planning board workshop notes of April 23rd.
Have a written second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And abstain.
Okay. That's it, right? Okay, uh, first public forum, anyone out there who's ever heard it tonight? Yes, sir.
Eric, current treasurer of Ashway Ambulance. Uh, thank you to the town councils who met with several of Ashway Ambulances, moving some of this information forward. Um, a little concern around bringing this eighty percent.
Eighty percent of what?
That's my question.
Current fiscal year's allocation.
What about sixteen seventeen? The last quarter of sixteen seventeen, we've never provided.
Yeah, I don't think that can, is concluded. I don't think that Eric can be administered because it's concluded, the fiscal year. So we can, we can find out definitively, but I'm pretty sure once the fiscal year's concluded.
So we were never given money that was, that the taxpayers authorized to give?
Well, yeah. That's true. That's true, yeah. We, we actually discussed that, and I'm not sure, but I think, I think once it's concluded, then I don't think it can come back, but I'll, I'll check. We'll check.
Okay.
So this, this, this motion that was made tonight was eighty percent of the current fiscal year.
Fifty percent.
Yeah, correct, so it's forty, right, eighty percent of it. So that, that, that ends for June 30th. So, but again, it's attached with two other conditions, you know.
So, conclusion.
To get the remains.
So, and maybe this isn't, again, I asked to be placed on the agenda tonight, which, I mean, please, what's?
Well, I have an answer to that too.
I'm not on the agenda, so I, I went along the popular way to get on the agenda, and the verbiage, the verbiage on the new business is even really obscure to me.
Well, we seek the solicitor's advice on putting motions together, Eric, because we're not lawyers, so that's kind of what we did. So we put it as best we can to deal with the, the current fiscal year, and possibly with the new fiscal year. Leading it into the new fiscal year, because we, we discussed in private that we had some concerns, and no votes were taken, so we, this is the conclusion that we came to.
So, we were asked to provide anything as a 10 questions, which we've done. So, let me finish, we were asked to, what, we were given 10 questions, concerns, and we were told to answer, which we've done. No one in that verbiage does say how you need.
Oh, come on. Can I tell you something?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I, I said this before. I said, I've said this before at open meetings, and I'll tell you again, if the insurance company came down and said, we want you to do these three or four things before we give you an insurance policy, you, you'd be, you're going to do those three or four things, why are you not going to have the insurance? It's the same situation with us, we asked you to, to complete to our satisfaction and your satisfaction, 10 items. You completed eight of them, as far as we were concerned, to our satisfaction, and possibly probably to your satisfaction. Two of them wasn't to, are not to our satisfaction. If you want us to, to play ball with you, then, but, you know, you've got to come back to us. We're trying, we're trying, we're trying to get to the point where, hey, you've done something nice for us, we're going to do something nice for you, but we're still looking for all 10 of those issues to be resolved, to move on there.
So the nepotism policy was, was redone, and was given to your solicitor?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm. Right, it wasn't to our satisfaction. Okay, to whose satisfaction? The council. So, my question is, what needs to be changed on it to bring to your satisfaction? I've spent, I've spent countless hours on all this. Countless hours. I haven't got a stipend, so, I haven't got a stipend. I'm not compensated in any way, shape, or form at all, okay? I've done the nepotism policy, we've looked at other nepotism policies. What needs to be changed on it to bring to your satisfaction? The main tenant of the anti-nepotism policy needs to have no more than two family members on the board of the nepotism. No more than two. No more than two, that's the, that's the deal. Is every other, is every other grant receiving recipient? The two organizations that we deal with for ambulatory services comply with that policy.
Well, they don't, but that's okay.
But they do. They do.
Well, according to Valium, so Valium's is not.
They do, they have two, there's two family members, the treasurer and his wife.
Okay.
That's the only family member, no more than two.
So you're saying that basically we have to have half the ambulance corps quit?
No. It just can't be either a board member or an officer. That's the deal.
But, but we've asked these questions, and is this immaculate motion, this is the first time.
No, not, 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 I don't believe it has. I haven't seen, I, I have not received anything, anything in writing from anyone, as far as that goes, other than to listen to the questions.
Eric, what we're, what we're hoping to do is between now and June 30th, so we don't lose, so you don't lose the money, we don't, we don't, we just go back to the general fund. We're hoping to sit down, maybe it's going to be Barbara and Tom again, sit down and eye out the differences that we have with the anti-nepotism policy in particular, and the business plan. Once those things are ironed out, then we're back and going, everything's going to be fine.
But who writes the business plan?
I don't know.
Apparently you've worked it out with Barbara. We, we, we're working. Right, right. But it's, 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 in other words, we put a good business plan together. I'm not a lawyer, we can't afford a lawyer, we, we are in the hole right now. Sixteen thousand dollars. I understand that. But, in, in essence, it appears as though we're not, it wouldn't be nice to sit down a long time ago. And again, I didn't get involved this until late. Right. But this was the long meeting about all of this, and it's going to be resolved a long time ago. It's not going to help in this situation, we've gone, we've been there, done that. Let's just move on, your money was awarded, we will find out about the prior fiscal year, because I know you had a concern.
So, and what is that money going to sound like to us?
It goes into the general fund.
So books are closed? Books are closed?
That's where it goes.
But again, the town never informed us of where we're getting that money from either. There's never anything done until they just didn't have a chat. So that's kind of, I want to say not a, a really good way to do that, I don't believe it probably would be, well, you just didn't send a chat, you just said, well, I'm not sending a chat.
Didn't notify me. Well, we had concerns, right. Right, you know, and here we are today, over a year later, we still do not know what those concerns are, or even if there was any validity to them. That stinks. No. Kevin, can we, I mean, come on, do we have, how many, how many times have we?
I don't want to argue, I just want to explain some historical facts, because I think.
You need some clarification.
There was a meeting scheduled as far back as August 2nd with Ashway Ambulances that was canceled by Ashway Ambulances. Never to be rescheduled again.
But we tried to reschedule.
The reason it was, it was canceled then is because Ashway decided to exercise its right to hire a lawyer.
Because you were, you were representing the town, that's why.
And I have been throughout this process, so that's why I've been asked to talk about the history of this. So the primary spokesperson for Ashway Ambulances, until I learned today from, um, from Kelly Precasa.
Right.
Uh, has been Rons Spazza.
Right.
And I was informed today that you will be the spokesperson going forward, that's fine. So, different messages have been sent to different people on both sides of this issue for months, and new people have come in with no understanding of what had gone on before. So a number of generalizations you've made tonight are factually incorrect, and I'm not saying you know they were incorrect, I'm just telling you, you weren't involved then. I was involved then, and most of what I'm telling you is in writing, it's all documented.
So, so there's a document that clearly states what is.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about discussions between the two groups. The anti-nepotism policy that was submitted by your organization in January was rejected right from the get-go.
Right.
It was only recently through Mrs., uh, Council President.
Correct, about three, four weeks ago, like, right?
Well, a paragraph is deleted.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
Council President, uh, Landoffi's, uh, concern about more than two relatives being on boards was not addressed. That was communicated a long time ago.
And that was part of our original ten submissions.
Well.
I get, I get what you mean.
We all, and, and we spent, Council, Council President Landoffi, with, with my assistance and his request, we spent hours looking for a business plan that was adaptable to a volunteer fire department or, uh, or ambulance association, which we sent to Mr. Precasa, who sent it to Mr. Spazza. Whether you got it or not, I don't know, that's not, we don't control that. Same thing with an anti-nepotism policy. I found one for a volunteer fire department out in the Midwest somewhere, this is what I think in Wisconsin. I sent, I sent that to Mr., uh, Attorney Precasa, who sent it to Mr. Spazza, months and months ago, February, March, it's all documented. So to suggest that you're the only one doing stuff to try to address this, or that.
Or we're falling, we're sleeping, we're falling asleep. We're getting, we're getting this resolved.
And it's, so we, and as recently as April 24th, I reached out at the Council President's request, I reached out to Attorney, uh, Precasa, and, and made a couple of suggestions to him to say that if this, when this comes up soon, I think, uh, Ashway Ambulances should put their best foot forward and have everything addressed. So, that didn't happen.
That was, he dropped the wall, I wondered.
Well, no, no, I'm not, I'm just giving historical facts.
So, we didn't have to reach out to him, I thought, I thought that you guys were under the impression that everything was satisfied, and I knew it wasn't. So I reached out to Kevin, because I said, I'm not going to let another week go by and have you guys think that you're all set, when in fact, you're not.
Well, like I said, I was fly inside today by phone call, Kelly, because Kelly sent out an email, we've got to go, and he didn't, he sent it to the wrong email address, anyway. That's not your fault.
It's, it's nobody's fault, I was trying to be, I was trying to be historically accurate, and, and I hope you can accept what I'm telling you, because it is all documented.
I'm not, that's not what I'm asking about documentation, sir.
So with that said, I'm, there are different people involved with the communications on both sides of the issue since last summer.
Right.
So, we should all take a breath and try to work out what's going forward, if it seems to me, if I can express my opinion, it's just common sense. I, I don't know if you disagree with that.
No, I don't disagree with that.
But who did what, who didn't do what, doesn't matter anymore, does it?
No. I think the problem I have with the nepotism policy is nepotism policy would be basically used is from a volunteer EMS in the state of Alabama. So, again.
If I can just, the two things that they're looking for, and we have discussed, because you're working with, uh, the, with the URI, on the business plan, is an official business plan that you would get by working with him, which you can certainly have in the next couple of weeks.
I doubt it. He's been, like I said, he's been interacting for a month.
I have been in touch with him too, so we'll make sure that this gets done, because that's, that's the, um, business plan, which you should be able to do, because he does know what he needs to do. And then, the anti-nepotism policy, my understanding from this last court discussion is that they want to have on the nepotism policy that no more than two members can be family members on the board. You already accomplished that by not having them on the chain of command, so I appreciate that. But that's what I understand from this last meeting, so those are the two things. One is the business policy, which will, with, with the gentleman in URI, and for the OHS State Chamber of Commerce. And the other one is just not to have two members of the board on, that are, are related, uh, family members. So, that is my understanding of this.
It's not, just, just so we understand this, though, this is not an easy thing to do, if you voted, you just had a meeting. So if you, if you're like asking, Frank, you need to step down tomorrow, you should remove your tie. So I don't get on that. You can't just have a meeting, it's like the meeting started late tonight. That's something that shouldn't happen, you know, things, there's a Bible, there's, and, and, and things that put things in play. You can't just say, well, you're off the block now, I don't think that's simple, I'm going to have to look into that.
Look into it, Eric.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it's not like, well, think about it, Eric.
How many people are on the board? Let's, 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 let's go through the numbers, five? Five members?
Seven members.
Seven members. How many of them are related to each other?
Right now?
Right now.
Of the seven?
Four, five, yeah. Two, three, four.
Four? So you know what? This is what the problem is, this is why they have these policies, you know, organizations, whether they're private organizations, they're public organizations, they almost always have a type of policy, because they don't want those four ganging up under three. It's, it's, it's almost like political, it's almost like having, you know...
What, it's ever happened.
And, and people who say, "Oh, it's not gonna happen." Well, you know what, some places it does happen. It can never happen in Ashway, but on the surface it doesn't look good. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is.
It's a fair opinion, I'm just, I'm trying to figure this out, because, again...
And if there are four, then two probably need to resign, whichever two it is, and get, um, more objective people on the board. That is certainly...
Unfortunately, it's not as simple as that, we don't have any help. You know, I mean, try to invest, Eric. I mean, that's, you know...
We'll, we'll talk about that again, sir.
But I guess, you know, and again, my other, my other thing is, is... And this is for everybody, keep in mind, why is it so... Because I'm not listed on the agenda. I asked to be on the agenda. And I, and in an email, in an email thing back and forth to you a month ago, I ran into the same problem. And I, and I talked to a town, I talked to a resigned town council president this past week after this. And I don't know if the policy is here. If you said the agenda, Frank, I get it. Is there another policy in place or are you here?
No. Three of the members of the board can request an item.
Okay. That's, that was my question, because in last week, it was two council members.
No, no, the majority of the council can request an agenda. Doesn't happen often, but it can. But, you know, just to clarify, you know, when I wasn't here at that meeting, and you gave your sermon about how we didn't answer your question, you asked, "You need me, Frank, can you advise me how I get placed on the agenda?" I said, "Hi, Eric, before I do that, I need to know more importantly, what is happening with the most recent audit, the finalized business plan, other questions the council gave to Barbara on the anti-nepotism policy." I didn't hear from you, so then I, sometime later in the morning, I responded, "Okay, we need time to review that info. Once this is reviewed, is our intent as a council to make our decision one way or the other. The process of putting an, an item on the agenda goes through me. Once an item is ready, it will be placed on the agenda for a decision. We meet the first and third Mondays of the month. I also want you to know that..." Anyway, I went into that legislative grant stuff, if you'd have answered my question either.
Oh, check's in my hand.
Okay. I'd love to have a copy.
I'm not sure how that check plays into all of this. I, I just, I just, I don't understand.
Well, you, you're asking for money.
I understand that.
And, and money was, I don't know what happened to it. I never got an answer for my email question.
Because it didn't happen?
Well, maybe you should've said that. I don't have any, I don't know what it is. I never got an honest answer about it, okay?
And the check, I have a good check in, in office.
I could. So anyway, so to answer your question about how you get on the agenda, I answered your question back on April sixth.
Right.
So, don't say I didn't answer your question. I answered it.
But, yeah, I asked to be on the agenda at the next meeting, and I'm not.
You were on the agenda. On the new business.
It doesn't say Eric Perrin on the agenda, does it?
No. You're representing Ashway Ambulances. That's what we put out.
But it doesn't say that, it doesn't say that Ashway Ambulances is on the agenda. It reads, "We..." I'm asking, I'm asking you about this for future reference.
It says Ashway Ambulances.
It says possibly considered, it doesn't say considered, it says discussed. Every, every other one says discussed, considered, discussed, considering. This one says possibly considered. For a majority, I found...
There wasn't possible to consider, it was simply to consider, possibly, consider and or vote for. It does not say discussed.
Eric, I'm, I'm asking the question, your organization was on the agenda at that point, it certainly should come up, I'd go, "All right, now I'm speak." Whether it says possible, with discussion, we're gonna go with the verbiage, let's stop right now.
I just, I just wanna be, like I said, we, we're hitting on all these notes, I'm sure that, yeah, this business plan's gotta be a specific way and all stuff, and we're all doing things which...
Don't worry about us, Eric, please. Just try and take care of the two conditions that we need, and then you can get the rest of the funding. For this current fiscal year.
Right.
You were awarded forty thousand dollars today. How about it, ask for this?
I guess the last question, Eric, is, please, there...
I may have a brain.
For the list of complaints we filed by these two people. Concerns, whatever they were. So now, you have the...
I'm not sure I understand.
So, the, the two people start this whole question and answer thing. Is there any documentation, dates the meetings were held, where they were held, were they held with the town council, was the town council taken? What were, what were the allegations? Is any of that documented here?
Your private emails, I would imagine. Some of the voices are complaining.
Right.
We take, I take complaints all the time.
Right.
Donating, whatever, this, and I refer to the solicitor or manager to, to rectify them.
Can I, can I answer part of that question?
Yeah.
The council never met, uh, and had any votes about anything regarding two individuals that you talked about, so there's no documentation, because there was no such meeting. Okay? And...
So it hadn't been a meeting if they, if there was...
Not the council as a whole, not talking about individual council people. One or more, I, I don't know, I can't say, is, is, to my knowledge, other than, uh, I don't, I don't know of any, I don't think there are any documents. There's no written complaint, I can tell you that, it's, it depends on what you're talking about. But I'm not aware of any written documents that you described. But there's certainly, I am aware that there was never a meeting or vote about...
There was no documents, there was no meeting, and there's no vote?
Of the council.
All right. How about an individual?
No, I'm not answering that. I don't know.
Again, I just try to figure out how we got to this point.
Well, let's worry about going forward.
Why?
And that's like two points, right?
It's very important.
Okay, so let's worry about not what happened to the council.
And, and I wanna make sure that they're, everyone's held the same standard.
Yeah, we're held on the same standard.
No, not, not, not the town, everyone. Anyone who receives family is held the same guidelines and, and something like that.
They are.
There's a quality across the board.
They are. They are. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else who should be heard? No one else? Okay. Next, on the morning of the day, there was an April twenty-third, twenty-eighteen, a town council planning board workshop. We discussed the solar ordinance. Again, it was a very productive meeting. A lot of back and forth on some possible amendments. Next steps will be, planning board will have a hearing, trying to put in play some of the concerns that they had on the ordinance. Uh, then they'll present those to the council, and then we'll try and come to a consensus on some of the modifications perhaps of the solar ordinance. So it was a very productive day, and, um, I don't know if anyone else... Yeah, it was totally very good meeting.
Very good meeting.
So that was it. Okay. Next, town manager, Bill Meara.
Thank you. We're probably still working with the municipal and three labor union representatives to set up dates, begin the first elective voting and renegotiation sessions for all separate unions that expire on June thirty eighth of this year. We've now got two set for the IBPO and police dispatches, over two of them. During the last two weeks, in April, I drafted requests for proposals for a new DPW pickup truck, a three-year DPW uniform rental and cleaning contract, and the remaining portion of the police department roof replacement project, all of which are currently funded in the FY nineteen April. April twenty-sixth, I met with planner Jim Lampier and representatives from Fuston O'Neil Engineering and Jan Works Inc. at Langworthy Field to discuss the ongoing grading, design, and construction in place during Phase One of the project. And also, that same week, planner Jim Lampier was in receipt of correspondence from Director Janet Quayton from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. The town was awarded an outdoor recreational grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for improvements to Langworthy Field, and that'll be for Phase Two. And hopefully, we'll be able to wrap up both Phase One and Phase Two before the snow flies to the end of the year. Special thanks to Jim Lampier for spearheading this initiative to obtain approximately one million dollars in funding for the entire recreational project, none of which comes from taxpayer funds. Also like to thank Recreation Director Mary Sawyer, Senior Planning Clerk Sean Henry, and DPW Director Tim Teff for assisting in the planning and development of support.
Thank you, Bill. Kudos to Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, next up, um, under old business, is number one, render a decision. This item will be continued until five twenty-one, I believe. Can you play it for me, Lisa?
Yes, yes, Eric, next to me.
Transferring rather lengthy, so we have to kind of redo that. Okay. All right. Next, under new business, number one, discuss, consider, and vote to approve six hundred and fifty-six remaining tax refunds resulting from the motor vehicle phase-out program in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three, twelve, eleven, to be issued by the finance office by June thirty.
Good evening, councilor.
How you doing?
So you're aware of the motor vehicle statute changes that took place in April eighteen, um, they increased the extension, they're fifteen years older, it's no longer assessed for, for motor vehicle tax. So we have to redo our, our tax roll, or I should say, Liz had to listen. I don't wanna take credit for any of this, because these two behind me did all the hard work here, um, Rita and Liz. So we, we had an adjusted tax roll, um, we had about two hundred and forty thousand that we had to return to taxpayers, all of which has been refunded by the state already. So we've been made whole on that money. So we had payments, about two hundred and nineteen thousand. We did have some people that paid the tax, they're a little bit of tax before we had a chance to abate their, their tax bill. Of that, it was about twenty-one thousand. We have returned about ninety thousand of it. Uh, we have about two thousand, three hundred remaining in refund checks that will get done by May of the month.
That's a tour early, we have to get it done by June thirty, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we'll get it ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so it's good.
Ahead of schedule. And we, well, between the three of us, we've done plenty of checks and balances, um, the total variance of the two hundred and forty thousand, the beginning tax roll, ending tax roll, and also the refund checks, Rita's been going through and checking them, covering her whole software, making sure that they take some time, so, pretty, pretty comfortable with the process we're going.
Okay, any questions for Brian, tell me.
Yeah, you know, Brian, I'll bet you, considering the number, I'm fucking cheat here, uh, considering that we have six hundred and fifty-six people that have to refund checks, I'll bet you the state did a refund of foot stamps, and they have to show you back.
No, 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 yeah.
No.
Not to mention the mental health of, uh, my board. Chris, he told me there had to write, there's a hundred and forty-four checks that are less than five dollars.